Regular meeting number 11 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. Eternal and merciful God, this evening the members of Columbus City Council meet in session to conduct the business of our city. As they begin the month of March, help them and all of us to remember that time marches on and that there are needs of citizens that must be addressed, especially in the unrelenting cold and snow of this harsh winter season. Especially, Lord, the hearts and prayers of the members of this council, as well as the citizens of this city, go out to all who are suffering because of the cold, especially Manuel Pacheco, whose life was lost in the fire while trying to keep warm, as well as the precious one-month-old baby girl who perished on Sunday in a house fire on the hilltop. May God's consolation come to the families and friends of those who have died, and may we all realize the necessary steps we must take to avoid these tragedies. May your blessings come to our Columbus firefighters and all the neighbors and friends who did all that they could to prevent these tragedies. In all difficulties, Lord, help the members of this council to realize that your grace is with them, assisting them and all of us in ways we cannot know, to serve and to represent the welfare of the citizens of our city of Columbus. And help the members of council to believe that you are indeed with them, and that they have what it takes to overcome whatever seems to be unconquerable, and to work with all for the good of all. The sunshine this evening reminds us that the glory of springtime is indeed coming. May there be a new springtime in our hearts by your grace, and a confidence in the minds of the members of this council and all of us, that there are better days ahead. Amen.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal?
So moved.
Sarah Second. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Are there any announcements or resolutions from members of council? Councilmember Craig? Councilmember Klein? President Pro Tem Miller? Councilmember Mills? Councilmember Paley?
Yes, President Ginther, I would like to ask Ms. Kadra Mohammed to come to the podium. Ms. Mohammed is here, as the executive director of the Center for Somali Women's Advancement, and she is here to invite us all to the International Women's Day Lunch this Saturday. Ms. Mohammed, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Council President Ginther, councilmembers Tyson, Paley, Mills, Miller, Klein, and Every eighth March, millions of people celebrate International Women's Day around the world. But in Columbus, I said that last year too, Columbus this day passed many years, unnoticed and celebrated. I know we, here in America, we celebrate the whole month as Women's History Month, but as to the day, March 8th itself, it was not celebrated until two years ago, that I decided to take it into my own hands and put together and organized a successful event at Ohio State House. And I want to thank, and I am proud to everyone who helped the Center for Somali Women's Advancement in this effort. I am therefore honored to invite all members of the Columbus City Council to join us this year's International Women's Day celebration, March 8th, at 10:30 a.m. at Ohio State House. We hope that you will be all joining us, and millions of others, as we celebrate the role of women in the society, advocate for further progress, and raise our voices in solidarity with women all over the world. In this year, Congresswoman Joyce Beatty, State Senator Shalita Tofars, among other dignitaries, will be in attendance. I would like to appreciate the support, encouragement, and recognition for this important occasion by the president and all members of the city council. I am particularly grateful for Councilwoman Paley for calling me this year for this announcement, as well as Councilwoman Tyson for introducing the resolution last year, as this initiative is marked a milestone in our city. I am honored to accept your invitation, and I am honored to invite you as well to join us. And I look forward to working with all of you in making the International Women's Day a birthday for all to remember. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mohammed. I look forward to being there to celebrate International Women's Day Lunch at the Ohio State House atrium, Saturday, March 8th, from 10:30 to 1 o'clock. Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, Councilwoman Paley, for asking Mrs. Mohammed to come to council. This year I won't be able to attend because I'll be away, but it certainly is a wonderful event to attend. You get to meet a lot of wonderful women who are doing amazing work in our community. It's just a great way to really kick off Women's History Month, and of course, thank you for starting the Women's International Women's Day. Thank you, and it is a fabulous event.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to seeing you. Thank you.
I have Council President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, President Ginther. I have one resolution, but before I begin the resolution, I just want to recognize and to thank Al Edmondson and recognize his work on a couple efforts. One being the work that he's doing, of course, out of his barber shop, A Cut Above the Rest. He was recognized last week and attended the president's initiative on My Brother's Keeper, which is an initiative that is focused on African-American males throughout this country and the issues and concerns that they have, and so the president's put together an initiative and the work that Al's doing in his barber shop that, I just want to say congratulations to him for being a part of that commission, as well as last Saturday, he held, there was an event held at the YMCA, Eldon War YMCA, and Councilman Craig was there, and he had a health fair. So I want to recognize him and also thank the Ohio State University nurses, as well as all the volunteers that were participating there to bring health care into the community. The resolution I'm going to bring to the floor tonight, and I am going to ask Sean Founts to start to walk towards the podium, it is Resolution 0018X, that's 2014. It is to recognize and to celebrate March is, so March is purchasing month, and to commend the public and private purchasing and supply management professionals for their commitment to excellence in their profession. Whereas purchasing and supply management professionals sue their combined organizations, purchasing powers, spend billions of dollars every year, and so have a significant influence upon economic conditions throughout this region. Whereas hundreds of local public and private purchasing and supply managers improve our regional flow of commerce through education, networking, and sharing best practices via local organizations. And whereas the city of Columbus participates with regional purchasing partners to aggregate needs for purchasing of goods and services, thereby maximizing local resources. And whereas the Central Ohio Organization of Public Purchasers, known as COA OPP, Local Chapter of the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing, and the Institute for Supply Management, Central Ohio, Inc., Local Chapter of the Institute of Supply Management, and other professional purchasing associations throughout the world engage in special efforts during the month of March to inform the public of the significant role played by purchasing professionals in business and industry and government. Whereas our city of Columbus Finance and Management Department Purchasing Office plays a significant role as a key leader in developing and implementing a purchasing system of quality and integrity that will maximize the value of public funds and provide fair and equitable treatment to all persons involved in the city's supply chain. Whereas the city of Columbus City Council joins with all purchasing professionals in business, industry, and government to celebrate March as purchasing month. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus, that this council does hereby recognize and commend the members of the following public and private organizations, purchasing organizations, for their commitment to excellence in the purchasing profession. We recognize the Central Ohio Organization of Public Purchasers, the Institute for Supply Management of Central Ohio, Inc., and City of Columbus Finance and Management Department, the Purchasing Office. And I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Sean, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. President Ginther, Chairwoman Tyson, members of council, as the procurement manager for the city of Columbus, I would like to thank you for your kind recognition of all of the purchasing professionals, public and private, who work and live in the city of Columbus. The agency for which I work, the Purchasing Office of the City of Columbus, is staffed with 12 dedicated professionals committed to providing the employees of our city with the goods and services needed to help the city accomplish its mission. To further this mission, the Purchasing Office promotes fairness and competition among vendors while striving to procure the highest-quality goods and services at the best price, while doing so in an environmentally sensitive manner. In 2013, the Purchasing Office managed approximately 530 contracts and 1,600 informal purchase orders that resulted in the purchase of approximately $112 million in goods and services. The Office offered training to other city employees and continued to work with our regional partners to further Mayor Coleman's Regional Cooperation Initiative. Purchasing is also proud to collaborate with the Equal Business Office and other city agencies in our continuing efforts to provide access to opportunities for small, minority, and women-owned businesses. It is a great privilege for me to work with the professionals within our purchasing office. Seven members are certified public purchasing professionals, four are certified public purchasing officers, and three have both certifications. These certifications show a level of proficiency and dedication to the procurement profession that is a direct benefit to the city. I am also very proud to work with the various professionals who participate in the procurement process throughout the city. Dozens of these professionals are also certified. Lastly, I would like to recognize all of the 240 governmental procurement professionals in Central Ohio, 34 of whom work for the city of Columbus. These professionals offer support and advice to each other through the local National Institute of Government Purchasing Chapter, the Central Ohio Organization of Public Purchasers, by the way, whose current president is an employee of the City of Columbus Public Utilities Department. These relationships forged through the organization save all of our regional governments time, money, and resources. Again, I want to sincerely thank you for passing the resolution and inviting me here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean, and we truly appreciate the work that you do each and every day, and again, for saving us time, money, and resources. Congratulations to you on this purchasing month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Any comments from our elected officials, city auditor, city attorney? Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk?
So moved.
Sarah Second. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 275 and 318-2014. Development Committee ordinance is 449-2014. Environment Committee ordinance is 398-2014. Zoning Committee ordinance is 439, 474, and 493-2014.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Finance Committee ordinance is 221, 352, 353, 383, 409, and 479-2014. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 285, 287, and 438-2014. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 420 and 432-2014. Public Safety and Judiciary Committee ordinance is 271, 392, 430, 431-2014. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 2985, 3036-2013, and ordinance is 245, 254, 259, 274, 311, 315, 317, 366-2014, and Resolution 20X-2014. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 266, 314, 327, 344-2014, and Resolution 19X-2014. Development Committee ordinance is 428, 441, 442, 443, 482, and 483-2014. Administration Committee ordinance is 382 and 403-2014, and appointment from the mayor's office numbered A0001-2014.
Thank you, Clerk Blevins. We do have one speaker on the consent agenda this evening, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, you have signed up to speak in support of 0443-2014. If you'd come forward to the podium, share your name, address, any organizations you represent, and you have three minutes to speak to the ordinance.
I'll speak in favor of it. I'd just like to see that this go to a good use as 1217, 1223, for a good use for the purpose. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Any questions or comments for Mr. Wilkins this evening? Thank you for coming down and sharing your thoughts on the legislation. If there are no other questions or comments, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions?
Second. A move for her.
Move. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll by voice.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes, with the exception of 0344-2014 and 0317-2014, on which I am abstaining.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginther?
Yes, consent agenda carries. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day table in emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you. The only ordinance in finance this evening is ordinance 0485-2014, is to decrease the appropriation in the general operating fund of the Columbus City, of the city of Columbus for the fiscal year of 2014 by $1,309,000, and to declare an emergency. In the fall of 2011, the Funding Review Advisory Committee, which was chaired by Tom Katzenmeyer, who is sitting out in the audience, convened and began its review of the current and potential streams of non-income tax funds for the arts, for tourism, and the human service industries. And one of those recommendations was a reallocation of the hotel motel tax in an effort to increase the investment in the travel and tourism industry. And so based upon that, this ordinance would decrease the general operating fund appropriation by, again, $1,309,000 to support Experience Columbus, which is an organization that makes sure that is responsible for about 61,000 jobs in Columbus and Franklin County, and has $7.8 billion in visitor-generated spending. Also, for GCAC, which, that organization has $226 million in economic activity and about 8,500 jobs. And lastly, for human services, there's about 1,166 nonprofit agencies within this, within the Franklin County area. They have about 51,000 employees and about $2.2 billion in payroll. And so this ordinance, again, will support the initiatives of those organizations to continue to move our city forward. Any other, any questions or comments? Hearing none, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. I'd now like to move to Health and Human Services. First, the first ordinance is 0304-2014, is to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health for the dental sealant program, and to authorize appropriation of $83,728 in grant money and fee revenues for the unappropriated balance of the Health Department Grants Fund, and to declare an emergency. The primary purpose of this dental sealant program is to prevent dental carries among schoolchildren through evidence-based community approach. This program targets higher-risk schools in order to reach the higher-risk students. In addition to currently serving second and third-grade students, the program will be expanded to include sixth and seventh-grade students, along with an additional second and third-grade students. This is an important program. We are getting less dollars in this program this year than we did last year because of not really seeing enough children, and we hope to be able to spend these dollars and certainly show the need, because the need is there, for more children to be able to be served with the dental sealant program. And with that, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. And the last ordinance is 0340, and is to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract with the Community Shelter Board for the purpose of continuing the city's support for the safety net program for homeless emergency shelters, the Mary Haven Engagement Center-related homeless shelter services, and the homeless prevention and transition services, to authorize expenditure of $3,222,400 from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. I'm going to ask Sarah Locan from the Community Shelter Board to come to the podium, as well as Sue Valillo of the Executive Director of the Faith Missions Shelter. This money is for the programs that have effectively and efficiently enabled our community to help individuals and families who are homeless or near homelessness to resolve their housing crisis. Sue, I'll give you a moment to speak on the legislation. And Sarah, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Sarah Locan, Community Shelter Board. Thank you, Chair Tyson, Council President Ginther, members of council. The Community Shelter Board funds and oversees a network of emergency shelters that serve around 9,000 distinct people a year. The legislation before you tonight provides funding to help us do three things. One, engage those who need help. Two, keep people safe. And three, help them restabilize in housing. We engage those who need help through an outreach team at Mary Haven. This is a team that hits the streets 365 days a year to look for people who may need shelter. They work to engage people to come inside to a shelter where they can be safe and receive services to end their homelessness. We keep people safe by providing a network of emergency shelters that serve as a safety net for people who are experiencing the crisis of their lives. Each shelter offers a safe place to sleep, a shower, a warm meal, help finding a job, and hope that better days will come. The average length of stay in shelter is around 30 days. Shelter truly is a safety net. The funding that you provide helps keep these critically needed shelter beds open. And to help people restabilize in housing, your funding allows us to provide financial assistance for rent, security deposits, utility costs, and moving expenses. The Community Shelter Board is deeply grateful for your support and your confidence in us to do this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Sue?
Good evening, council members. I'm Sue Valillo, Executive Director of Faith Mission. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight on behalf of the Community Shelter Board and their partner agencies, including Faith Mission, that benefit from this funding allocation. I would like to share some information with you about the emergency shelter system operation so far in fiscal year 14. Since July, 4,436 households have been sheltered in Columbus homeless shelters. That represents 4,722 adults and 1,866 children in shelter in Columbus in six short months. That is a 24% increase over the same time period last year. Columbus shelters are and have been overflowing. On average, each night, there were 13 women waiting to get into shelter when there was no room available for them. 13% of single men in shelters are U.S. military veterans, and more than 36% of families coming into emergency shelter are already employed. I want to tell you a little bit about one of our residents at Faith Mission. Andy grew up in Columbus, had moved away, was working as a medical assistant, when a close friend shared with her the news of their declining health. Andy agreed to move back to Columbus, move in with her friend, and provide care for them. When the friend passed away, Andy was left with income from a part-time job and no place to live. After a few days on the street, she came into Faith Mission. She has gained employment working with our Employment Resource Specialist in one of our local employment partners, and she quickly found housing that she could afford with her new job. She would have been here with us tonight, except she's a little tired from moving into her new house over the weekend. Those are the stories that we're seeing every day at Faith Mission and throughout the shelter system, and there is no doubt that the second half of fiscal year 14 will show a continued increase in the number of people needing shelter. In the face of this overwhelming demand, the Community Shelter Board and their partner agencies have stepped up to expand the community safety net. With the support of CSB, Faith Mission began winter overflow in August. We are sleeping up to 30 women each night in our administrative offices and using chairs overnight in common areas when there's no more room for beds. Other shelter providers are doing the same thing, making makeshift bed space and moving people in and out of alternate sites. Despite the increase of people needing shelter, housing outcomes have remained fairly stable, dropping only 3%. We have done more with less, and we will continue to work together with the Community Shelter Board to operate a system that keeps people safe and helps get them back on the path to housing. On behalf of all the agencies that operate emergency shelters in the homeless system, we are grateful to you for your commitment to serving people in need and for your financial support. Thank you.
Councilman Craig?
Councilmember Tyson, let me personally thank you for certainly shepherding this ordinance. It's clear to all of us, we've talked about it, we recognize that our city, in many ways, is a leader in our nation in much of what we're doing. But there is a realization, and we have said that, and we need to continue to make sure that that's on the forefront, where anybody is hungry, where anybody is outside, it is unacceptable. And we appreciate all that you are doing and others are doing to make sure that our children and our families, we started off this evening talking about when Monsignor Cody... Cody referenced, you know, trying to keep warm the young child that died, and there are others that are suffering. And so we want to make certain that we're doing, continue to do all that we can to support everyone in our community, no matter where they are, that they have quality of life and the appropriate resources for shelter. Thank you for what you're doing for us.
Thank you, Councilwoman Craig. And first of all, Sarah, thank you for coming down, and we appreciate the work that the Community Shelter Board is doing, and certainly, as you say, engage to be safe as well as to restabilize families and individuals. And certainly, I just appreciate the hard work, especially in times where we know that the numbers are certainly increasing. And Sue, your comments about we have a 24% increase, that's pretty significant. We understand what's, you know, as you said, the working poor are there. We certainly understand what's happening with, you know, you mentioned the veterans, we have disabled individuals, and we certainly know, based upon some of the federal programs being cut, that our numbers are even, our numbers keep growing. So even having a world-class program, the need is still there. And certainly appreciate all the organizations and the churches are stepping up to help us to try to make sure that people are not sleeping outside and really putting together strategies to move individuals permanently out of being homeless. So I thank you for that. Again, Sue, this was important that we make sure that people get to hear from the agencies as well as, and you mentioned Andy's story, to be able to hear from the individuals that we are helping. And we have, we still have work to do in our community, but I thank you for what you're doing and look forward to us continuing to work together so that we, so everyone has an opportunity to be able to move forward in the city of Columbus. So thank you so very much, and with that, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. That's all I have on my committees this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Our next committee is the Recreation and Parks Committee. Councilmember Craig chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. In the Recreation and Parks Committee, we have two ordinances tonight that support the Violence Intervention Program, an important initiative that helps keep our neighborhoods and our young people safe. Ordinances 0277-2014 and 0279-2014 allow the city to enter into contracts with Community for New Directions and the Columbus Urban League to provide violence interruption and crisis response activities. Those activities can include responding to specific gang-related confrontations, working to mediate conflict tensions, and connecting youth and families to social, educational, and developmental services they need. These efforts are part of the city's APS program. Community recreation centers serve as the base of operation in each zone. That includes Beatty on the east, on the Near East side, Barrick on the South side, Glenwood on the West side, and Linden on the North side. Intervention workers will also respond to issues in communities and neighborhoods outside of these areas as needed. Director McKnight, do you have any additional comments before reading these two ordinances into the record for passage?
President Ginther, Councilman Craig, members of council. Councilman Craig, I believe you summed up the program very well. This is one part of the APS program. In addition to the intervention work, we also do the late-night programming at those centers on Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights. And we also, in the summer, again, will be offering 12 of our CAP City Nights programs at a variety of parks to bring the neighborhood together. So I think combined with the Neighborhood Intervention Program being operated through Communities for New Directions and Urban League, those three make up the APS program, and we're in our fourth year now, and we're looking forward to moving forward.
I'd like now to read the ordinances into, for the record. Ordinance 0277-2014, to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to exercise the option to renew an agreement with the Community for New Directions to provide professional and fiscal services related to the implementation of the Neighborhood Violence Prevention Program 2014 Contract, to authorize the expenditure of $304,000 from the Recreation and Parks Fund 285, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or concern, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Ordinance 0279-2014, to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into an agreement with the Columbus Urban League to provide professional and fiscal services related to the implementation of the Neighborhood Violence Intervention Program 2014 Contract, to authorize the expenditure of $333,000 from the Recreation and Parks Fund 285, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Ordinance 0323-2014, to authorize the transfer of $1,396,547.85 within the Recreation and Parks Bond Fund to amend the 2013 capital improvement budget, to enter into contract with Tyco in the amount of $1,305,000 for the Burr Liner Athletic Complex improvements with a project contingency in the amount of $95,000, to authorize the expenditure of $1,400,000 from the Recreation and Parks Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance will pay for costs associated with renovations to improve the Burr Liner Athletic Complex by replacing the gym flooring due to mercury contamination, installing a new HVAC system, replacing the existing lighting, and other basic building improvements. If there are no questions or concerns, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And before reading this next ordinance, I'd like for you to please join me in saluting the Recreation and Parks Committee for their outstanding achievement and commitment to the nutrition of our young people. We have the largest summer program in the state of Ohio. Would you join me in saluting them? On Wednesday, February the 26th, the Department of Recreation and Parks was honored by the Children's Hunger Alliance at their Menu for Hope with a distinguished honor. We currently, well, in 2012, we served 429,000 meals. In 2013, we serving, we served 482,000 meals, which is a 50,000 increase in our net meals serving. And the city of Columbus, again, the summer program is the largest in the state of Ohio. A director comments regarding this tremendous honor.
President Ginther, Councilman Craig, the summer food program has really been something that I've learned a lot about in the last two or three years and the impact that has on youth, both from, obviously, nutrition, but also learning loss and education and how it's all coming together. Right now, I believe the number, statewide, is we serve about 12% of the students that are eligible for the summer food, for lunches during the school year, during the summer. The goal is to get close to, I think, 26%, President Ginther, if that's correct, by 2016. So we've still got a lot of work to do, and I want to just give a shout-out to Kay Snyder, who runs that program for us. She's done a tremendous job and is continuing to work hard to increase those numbers, and we appreciate the support of council, and with that support, we believe we can continue to grow those numbers.
I think now in 2012, there were 172 sites, and now 2013, there are 212 sites.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your comments. I will read the ordinance in the record. Ordinance 0335-2014, to authorize and direct the appropriation of $200,000 within the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund, to direct a transfer in appropriation of $200,000 from the Neighborhood's Initiative Fund to the Recreation and Parks Operating Fund for expenditures related to the summer food program, and to declare an emergency. This money is being provided to help increase the participation of eligible youth during the summer and the school year. This will include advertising, staffing, and increasing the number of food sites for both and during the school year. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And then finally, ordinance 0338-2014, to authorize the appropriation of $250,000 within the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund, to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contract with United Way of Central Ohio for the implementation of Columbus Kids Ready, Set, Learn Initiative, to authorize the expenditure of $250,000 from the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund, and $59,090 from the Community Development Block Grant Fund for the total of $309,090, and to declare an emergency. United Way of Central Ohio is leading an effort to provide school readiness screening and referral services for approximately $8,245.5 to four-year-olds, to four-year-old children and their families. The program will focus on the communities of the greatest needs, those being Central City Columbus, Wyland Park, South Linden, West Side, South Side neighborhoods. Director, any comments?
Again, President Ginther, Chairman Craig, and members of council. I think Councilman Klein, you've summed it up very well. Again, we will contract with United Way and pass the funds through to them who will administer this program.
Thank you very much for your comments. If there are no questions or, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Tyson, do you have comments?
Okay. Councilwoman Craig, this is just, this is a great program because it really is important for us to make sure that our children are, get the skill sets that they need to be able to come to school and to be prepared. And I know that this program through United Way is that the individuals go out to the homes and work with the parents to ensure that their children have the proper skills before they attend school. So this is a critical program, and it's one that is really a hands-on program, you know, working with each child one-on-one to move them forward and working with their parents. So this is, this is a wonderful piece of legislation and great partnership with United Way. Thank you so much.
Rightly stated. We have said clearly that we need to be working with young people at the very early ages to make sure that they come to school ready to read and to compete, continue to compete as they grow in this world economy. If there are no questions or concern, I move for passage and request a voice vote. Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Mills.
Yes.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Our next committee is the Public Safety and Judiciary Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Ginther. First in public safety tonight, 324-2014, to authorize and direct the city attorney to pay the judgment in the amount of $379,790.78 to Versal Helicopters, Inc., in accordance with a jury verdict awarded in the lawsuit of Versal Helicopters versus City of Columbus et al., filed in the United States District Court, Southern District of Ohio, Eastern Division, to authorize the appropriation of $379,790.78 from the Special Income Tax Fund and to declare an emergency. City Attorney Pfeiffer.
Chair Klein, President Ginther, members of council. The Columbus Division of Police has a helicopter fleet. There's six helicopters in number. When the police buy these helicopters, they buy them brand-new, and they spend over, just a little bit over $2 million per helicopter. After years of use, these helicopters then are sold. In fact, a helicopter's going to be coming up for sale pretty soon, and that helicopter has been in service about five years and has 8,800 hours on its engine, and mostly in aircraft, you talk about hours of operation. Well, about three years ago, we sold a helicopter to a company out of British Columbia, up there in Canada. We sold it for $510,000. We sold it as-is. The contract says as-is, but in an airworthy condition. This fellow came down from Canada, he took the plane, took the helicopter, flew it, flew it out of here. But by the time he got to Canada and took apart the engine, he said, hey, this engine's got some problems, it's not airworthy. We argued that you bought it as-is, they sued us, we lost a jury verdict over here in the federal district court, saying, well, as-is means also an airworthy condition. And I might add now that our contracts have been altered, so that that phrase is not there, so we wouldn't incur this in the future. So basically, what you have is, we sold a helicopter for $510,000. Now, we're going to have to give this person back $380,000. So you're looking at about really selling the helicopter for $130,000. Now, we might have to pay in the future, and this is an issue that's pending, some pre-judgment or post-judgment interest. Now, right now, the district court has ruled against a plaintiff on that, but that's yet to be seen. But tonight, we would ask you to please pass this ordinance and let us move on. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney Pfeiffer. Any questions for the city attorney? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next is 368-2014, to authorize and direct the Director of Public Safety to expend funds with the Franklin County Commissioners for the use of the Franklin County Corrections Centers for Housing of Prisoners, to authorize the expenditure of $4.8 million from the general fund and to declare an emergency. Deputy Director speaks.
Councilmember Klein, President Ginther, members of council. This is a longstanding contract with the Franklin County. The rate at which prisoners are paid $7 million per day is based upon a federal formula that has been used since the early 1990s. We would ask that we continue this wonderful partnership we have with the county in the consolidation of services for the housing of prisoners, which benefits all government in central Ohio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaks. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Moving on to Public Utilities. First in Public Utilities is 3032-2013. I request to table it indefinitely by voice vote.
Second. Craig.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Mills.
Yes.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
Next is 3040-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Olam &amp; Shute Construction, LLC, for the SWWTP thickening improvements and additional renovations and an expenditure of up to $2,908,000 in funds from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
236-2014, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Elite Excavation Company of Ohio, Inc., for the Chase Road Area Waterline Improvements Project for the Division of Water, to authorize the transfer in expenditure up to $2,274,496.95 within the Waterworks Enlargement Voted Bonds Fund and to amend the 2013 CIB. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And finally, in Utilities, 251-2014, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to execute a construction contract with Beeler Excavating, Inc., for the Cook to execute a construction contract with Beeler Excavating, Inc., for the Cook Road Area Waterline Improvements Project for the Division of Water, and to authorize the expenditure of $2,499,998.79 within the Waterworks Enlargement Voted Bonds Fund. Any questions or comments on this ordinance? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Council President, that wraps up public safety and utilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Our next committee is the Technology Committee. President Pro Tem Miller chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. In the Technology Committee tonight, we have one item. It's 372-2014, to authorize the Director of Department of Technology and the Director of the Department of Columbus Public Health to modify an annual contract with Language Access Network, LLC, for streaming video and phone-based interpretation services to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes, to authorize the expenditure of $20,025,000 from the Department of Technology Internal Services Fund, and to declare an emergency. And I believe this is just an extension of another year contract with Language Access Network, LLC. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
That is all we have in Technology Committee, but I do have two items in Rules and Reference, President Ginther. 2342-2013, to amend various sections of the Columbus Zoning Code in order to create a definition for extended stay hotels and to modify the C4 Commercial District to require extended-stay hotels to be subject to the development standards of the AR4 Apartment Residential District, as well as being subject to the Parkland Dedication Ordinance. And as the legislation states, that this is just allowing the extended-stay hotels to be, to modify the C4 Commercial District in order for it to be subject to the AR4 Apartment Residential District. And I would like to thank Chris Presuti for all his work in this code change. He's done a wonderful job in this. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
173-2014, to amend Sections Chapter 3391, nonconformities of the Columbus Zoning Code in order to clarify the rebuilt requirements in the case of a conforming building with a nonconforming use. And what this change is, is just that there is a, it's some clarification in Sections 3391.05 where there was one sentence that was very much unclear, and this will correct that. If there is no questions or comments, I'd like to first amend as submitted to the clerk.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And that is all I have in Rules and Reference, President Ginther.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Miller. Our next committee is the Development Committee. Councilmember Mills chairs that committee. Madam Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight, in Development Committee, I have the following ordinances, beginning with ordinance 0394-2014, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a Columbus Downtown Office Incentive Agreement with Medical Mutual of Ohio, as provided in Columbus City Council Resolution 0088X-2007, adopted June 4 of 2007. NRI Equity Land Investments, LLC, is the owner of 1.263-acre parcel of land, which is in the city of Columbus, and a 0.812-acre parcel of land, which is in Grandview Heights. Wanted to share a little bit about Medical Mutual, which was founded in 1934. It is the oldest and largest health insurance company in Ohio, and it's headquartered in the city of Cleveland. However, Medical Mutual of Ohio is proposing to expand its Columbus operation by investing approximately $500,000 in leasehold improvements, which includes furniture and fixtures. The company will enter into a long-term lease agreement on a vacant office space consisting of approximately 13,452 square feet, retain 11 full-time jobs, and relocate 38 full-time permanent positions, which will be new to the city of Columbus. This annual payroll is approximately $2.2 million from Liberty Township into the Downtown Business District. Medical Mutual of Ohio will qualify for the Columbus Downtown Office Incentive in an amount equal to 50% of the payroll taxes paid on the relocated positions, or approximately $82,878, over a term of up to three years. The Development Department recommends granting a Columbus Downtown Incentive Program to Medical Mutual of Ohio. And with that, I would turn the floor over to Director Shoney to add some additional comments related to ordinance 0394. Director Shoney.
Madam Chair, President Ginther, members of council, thank you. You did a very nice job summarizing the project. This is another opportunity for us to begin to fill in our downtown office space. This is going on to the 14th floor of the One Columbus Building, right at Broad and High. We're excited about bringing these jobs downtown. They range from about $48,000 a year up north of about $150,000 a year. Obviously, with a company like Medical Mutual, they will have an extensive benefit package. So we're very excited about bringing these jobs downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Shoney. I do want to mention, as healthcare becomes an increasing topic of discussion, Medical Mutual provides a range of group and personal health insurance plans for more than 1.6 million customers, and have a variety of products, SuperMed Classic, SuperMed Plus, and some others that provide a prescription drug support to their customers. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0460-2014, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract with the Greater Linden Development Corporation for administrative costs associated with revitalization efforts in the Greater Linden area, to authorize the expenditure of $28,753 from the Community Development Block Grant Fund, and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all I have this evening, President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Our next committee is the Administration Committee. Councilmember Paley chairs that committee. Madam Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Ginther. In the Administration Committee today, we have ordinance 0380-2014, to authorize the Director of the Department of Human Resources to enter into a contract with the law firm of Baker &amp; Hot Settler, LLP, for the purpose of providing assistance with collective bargaining negotiations and related activities, to authorize the expenditure of $300,000 from the Employee Benefits Fund, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code 1959, and to declare an emergency. This year, the city's involved in five collective bargaining negotiations. Baker &amp; Hot Settler has represented the city in collective bargaining negotiations for over 15 years, and as the chief negotiators, they have acquired a thorough knowledge of each contract and administrative and operational complexities for administering them. They are therefore best suited to work with the city to amend existing provisions that present administrative and operational challenges for city departments. Through collective bargaining, the city has been successful at exceeding its goals as defined by the Economic Advisory Committee related to insurance premiums and pension pickup. Therefore, retaining the chief, the same chief negotiator allows for continuity and is the most expedient, efficient, and cost-effective course of action to take. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0381-2014, to authorize the Director of the Department of Human Resources to enter into a contract with SafeX Incorporated, for the purpose of providing assistance as may be necessary for industrial hygiene services and safety program assistance to all divisions, to authorize the expenditure of $120,000 from the Employee Benefit Fund, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code 1959, and to declare an emergency. SafeX has greatly contributed in the city of Columbus's ability to obtain the Capital Area Safety Council BWC premium rebates, which over a 10-year period has totaled approximately $4.2 million. Working with SafeX has resulted in indirect cost savings through reduced employee overtime, reduction in accident investigations, reduction in lost productivity, repairs of damaged equipment and property, and costs associated with lower employee morale and absenteeism. The HR department has previously gone out for bids for these services, and SafeX is the only entity that has been able to respond to all aspects of the RFP, therefore making SafeX a sole source. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I would ask Director Christie to comment on the City of Columbus Employee Recognition and Award Celebration, which we are having this week. Director Christie.
Chair Paley, President Ginther, members of council, good evening. Very briefly, on Thursday, March 6, beginning at 8:30 a.m., we will have our annual employee recognition ceremony. It will be held at the Police Training Academy. This is the time of the year where each year we recognize our employees for their innovation, their ingenuity, for many of their cost-saving ideas, and in many instances, for their longevity and their commitment in service to the city. The intent is for us to just take special time out of our calendars to extend our appreciation and to recognize their service to the city. So, to the extent that it's possible, that any, it's available to each of you in your respective schedules to be present, that would be fantastic. We're looking forward to another great celebration that'll occur. It will begin at 8:30 and should conclude by 10 o'clock. We just thank you for your continued assistance and support over the years for many of the programs that we've initiated on behalf of our employees, and thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, Director Christie, and I will be there to recognize our employees, and I welcome anyone else who has the availability in their calendar. That's all I have. Council President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Tonight, our next committee is the Rules and Reference Committee. I chair the committee, and we have ordinance 0484-2014, to amend Section 371.02 of the Columbus City Code by revising the allocation of the city's combined 5.1% hotel-motel taxed to appropriate funds in the Hotel-Motel Tax Fund. This ordinance and ordinance 0485-2014, considered earlier this evening, adjusts the allocation of the city's combined 5.1% hotel-motel tax, and decreases the portion of city bed tax dollars available in the city's general fund. The city's bed tax dollars moving forward will be redistributed in entirety to support Experience Columbus, the arts and human service providers. This is a continuation of the city's investment in not only the promotion of Columbus as a destination, but the arts community that helps make our community vibrant. It also reflects the fact that there are ever-increasing human needs in our community, and that we have an obligation to ensure we are investing in services that help to meet those needs. This is on top of our direct support for agencies like the Community Shelter Board funding, for which we also passed tonight, and where the city will likely invest additional resources this year. The end of the day, this code change will not only invest in human services for the least among us, it will help Columbus compete as a destination, attracting more visitors, increasing bed tax receipts, which we can reinvest into these critical services. Quite honestly, we wouldn't be here in this position tonight, considering this, without the leadership of Tom Katzenmeyer, who led the Funding Review Advisory Council, the FRAC, and because of the very capable leadership and guidance of councilmembers Tyson, Klein, and Craig, who participated on the FRAC through that process. Are there any questions or comments from councilmembers? If not, entertain a motion for passage. Second, clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Passed. If there is anything else to come before council this evening, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a few non-agenda speakers we'll take momentarily. We will reconvene for zoning at 6:30. Entertain a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Stand adjourned. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Are there any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there is not.
Any first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there are none.
We will now go to the zoning committee. President Pro Tem Miller chairs the committee. Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. First in the zoning is 180-2014, to rezone 5062 Hayden Run Road, being 12.65 plus or minus acres, located on the northwest corner of Hayden Run Road and Edwards Farms Drive, from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to LARO Limited Apartment Residential Office District. The applicant is MultiCon Development Corp. Company. The proposed use is multi-unit residential development. It receives the Development Commission recommendation for approval, and also the City Department recommendation for approval. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to first to request to amend to emergency.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next is 1752-2013. I would first like to remove it from the table.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
To grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.039, R4 Residential District Use, 3312.29 Parking Space, 3312.25 Maneuvering, 3332.05 District Lot With Requirements, 3333.3.18 Building Lines, 3332.19 Fronting on a Public Street, 33333332.25 Maximum Side Yards Required, 3332.26 Minimum Side Yard Permitted, and 3332.27 Rear Yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1499 Elwood Avenue, to permit two-unit-dwelt buildings on the same lot and two single-unit dwellings on the same lot with reduced development standards in the R4 Residential District. The applicant is Metropolitan Holding, LLC. Proposed use is a two-lot, each with two-unit buildings, a separate one-unit building, and two lots, each with two separate single-unit buildings with reduced development standards in the R4. This actually, variance will actually be replaced by the next one. So I would like to first to request move for passes with a no vote. I did.
Craig. Klein. Miller.
No.
Mills. Paley. Tyson. President Ginther.
Thank you. Next is 321-2014, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.039, R4 Residential District Use, 3312.09 Isle, 3332.16 Exception for Single Family or Two-Family Dwelling, 3312.25 Maneuvering, 3312.29 Parking Space, 3332.05 Airdistrict Lot With Requirements, 3332.19 Fronting on a Public Street, 3332.25 Maximum Side Yards Required, 3332.26 Minimum Side Yard Permitted, and 3332.27 side yard permitted, and 3332.27 rear yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1499 Elmwood Avenue, to permit one, two-unit and one, single-unit buildings, each on two separate lots, and two, single-unit buildings, each on two separate lots with reduced development standards in the R4 residential district. The applicant is Metropolitan Holdings LLC. The proposed use is two-lots, each with a two-unit building and separate one-unit building and two lots, each with two separate single-unit buildings with reduced development standards in the R4 residential district. It receives the Fifth by Northwest Area Commission Recommendation for Approval and also the City Department Recommendation for Approval. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to first to request to amend to emergency.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next is 04404-2014, and I'd like to request this for, to be tabled for one week.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next is 422-2014, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3333.02 AR12, ARLD, and AR1 apartment residential district use, 3312.21 landscaping and screening, 3312.25 maneuvering, 3321.05A vision clearance, 3333.055, exception for single or two-family dwelling, 3333.09 area requirements, 3333.16 fronting on a public street, 3333.18 building lines, 3333.23D minimum side yard permitted, 3333.24 rear yard, 3333.25 side or rear yard obstruction, and 3333.255 perimeter yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1441 Chesapeake Avenue, to permit three, four-unit dwellings and six, two-unit dwellings on one lot, and one, three-unit dwelling and three, two-unit dwellings on two lots, while retaining the open-spaced lot with reduced development standards in the AR1 Apartment Residential District, and to repeal the ordinance numbers 1704-2013 and 1845-2013, passed on July 22, 2013. The applicant is Metropolitan Holdings LLC. The proposed use is two, three, and four-unit dwelling developments with reduced standards. It receives the Fifth by Northwest Area Commission Recommendation for Approval and also the City Department Recommendation for Approval. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to first request to amend to emergency.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And last in zoning, we have 444-2014, to rezone 1066 North High Street, being .31 plus and minus acres located on the east side of North High Street, 20 plus and minus feet north of East Third Avenue from R4 Residential District to C4 Commercial District. The applicant is, is under Douglas Graff. Proposed use is commercial. It receives the Development Commission Recommendation for Approval, the Italian Village Commission, Area Commission Recommendation for Approval, and lastly, the City Department Recommendation for Approval. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to first to request, as amended, as submitted to the clerk.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And that is all we have in zoning tonight, President Ginther.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Miller. Anything else to come before the zoning committee this evening? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Stand adjourned.